Let's jump down here and do this airport.
Do you want me to go grab that? Everybody have it. I made copies.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I gave you one. I have one on the desk. Let me grab you one.
I think I went through this. I actually got one. We need to do it on a one-year term every year, right?
Probably. Jeff Cameron.
The DA looked at, or the AD, I guess the DA did too. It's more focused towards four years, but we have never renewed it.
No, we should have renewed it every year. And we haven't done it in one year, 21.
Okay.
It says before September.
You can't have a year. You can only have a year contract.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you guys to consider redoing it again. The airport is now a place where it's self-sufficient. When we started this agreement, the city, over the course of 10 years, they spent almost $80,000 to get a fuel system up and running up there. It was not a very good use of money at that time. It was previous administrations. After I was hired, we put in, I don't know, $12,000 or $15,000 because we had to bring it back up to code again. Once we got everything up and running, the fuel dispenser puts no longer a valid fuel sensor. It has to be off a credit card machine out there. And the city had expired all the resources that we could do towards the airport. Airport's vital for our community. People use it weekly for the sales. There's been a couple of cases where Alba's Airport, their lighting has been down. So Cher has used it for setbacks. It's very important for our community. It just, it helps stir the economic, you know, economic development or economy 101. The more money spent, the more money circulated. Over New Year's weekend, I had to go out there twice because people were there visiting family or they were on a hunting trip or whatnot, and they had problems out there. So I would go out there and help them. It's important for our region and for our economy. We partnered together to help with that fuel system. I think that it ended up being $2,000 or $3,000 for the city and $2,000 or $3,000 for the county. And then, since then, you guys have helped mow it. The airport looks better today than I ever remember it looking. And I think that it's due because of the partnership. I would encourage you guys to continue to partner with the city on this. Basically, it's just going to continue with the mowing. Last week, the city approved an amended budget where we have funds set aside to buy a tractor and a brush hog so we can get put in the rotation with mowing it. But with this agreement, it just helps the community at large.
As far as the mowing, if Ben and Jake trades off or does it together, it mows pretty quick.
You're gonna have to have a provision to spray all that fence because our operators need to stay away a foot anyway because somebody's gonna get in that fence and they will destroy it. It's my thought.
Yeah, I agree. We need to spray that fence to make sure grass doesn't grow up in there.
Well, you got, you got like a zero-turn mower out there or nothing? You can make a pass with, you know, big mower.
I would probably recommend using a ground sterilizer and use it frequently. They say five years. You'll probably have to use it yearly. But if you don't, because if you spray straight ground up or something, you'll get certain weeds that come up.
Well, you, well, not all you get back is weeds.
Is weeds, yeah.
You definitely need a soft sterilizer.
Could your sprayer do that if I bought the chemical?
Yeah, we could probably do that.
I tell you, we have that little sprayer that goes on the back of a four-wheeler. And that's.
Yeah, we could spray a lot better than that. We got a commercial one that goes on the back of that.
Yeah, I can. We can spray that and then spray around the lights to keep the mowers away from the lights and all. Well, this contract's kind of dated to '24. I say we just go ahead and, I make a motion, we go ahead and.
So does that all we need to do or do we need to write this contract where it says year? So will you do that, Mike?
I can do that.
Or is it just a yearly basis?
Okay.
I mean, it's stated in here.
It's stated in there, yeah.
But we've never renewed it.
But we haven't renewed it.
I haven't. I haven't. I was in quarantine all last week. Mike called me over, asked if I could attend, and we're clear to be around people again. I haven't reviewed it, to be honest with you. I believe that there was a provision that said if it's not done yearly, it's an automatic renewal. Is that what you want now or how do you want it?
Well, yeah, it has to be yearly for.
For county. County's supposed to be one year at a time.
Yeah, we can't do anything, even our lease purchase.
That's all it needs to state, just do it yearly and put in.
And you can change it from September to January to update it where we're at right now.
Yeah, that's why I was saying if you can bring us an updated version, then next week we sign that.
Okay.
And like Mike said, we'll honor it till the 24th.
Okay.
But we have to renew it every year.
So I'll just put in a sentence that said it was renewed at this date for one year.
Just say the end of February or January.
Yeah.
It was stated January 31st and send it up here and we'll sign it next week.
I'm gonna take care of it.
Okay. All right, so we'll need no motion on that. Let's go ahead and jump over to the ARP funds. Ben's Mike's still here. He called me, or I talked to him on the phone the other day. Didn't you say NOTA had only received from you and Rural Water?
When I, it had been, it's been three weeks now since I've talked to them.
Talked to NOTA.
And yes, they had only received two completed applications. One from the City of Cherokee and then they received one from Rural Water. The Rural Water one was for, I don't know, it was over $100 million. I don't remember the exact number, but it was a very large sum of money. And then the City of Cherokee was $13 million, $13.3 million. And they had received partial information from other entities, but they hadn't received completed. I encouraged them to reach out to them or, you know, I said, if I need to reach out to them, what do you want to do? And I know through other channels that the state is getting ready to close that portal where they're not going to be accepting applications. And I don't have a deadline, but it's possible the end of the month.
Well, I'd heard that they've already exceeded the amount of money that they have to give out, and so that's why they're closing that portal. I talked to Carmen and I talked to Aline. And Carmen was wanting Shayna to write one of them letters, kind of like she wrote for you, but you didn't use it, right?
She didn't write it.
And I don't think that we need to write them letters because when we donated the 10% towards the, that says we're behind the city.
Well, you get extra points if you have letters of support.
Okay.
And so Shayna never gave me a letter.
She had to write one, but I know.
And so I couldn't wait on her. I just submitted it.
Well, that's what I told her about this Carmen deal. Dragging their feet's not gonna, they need to go ahead and get something submitted. And Aline said that they've talked to NOTA and NOTA didn't know of a joint county. So I don't know when they talked to them, but I told her, I said, just get something sent to NOTA right away, Gaila. And I had Shayna reach out to Jett, Helena, and Goldtree. And she responded back that Jett has applied and stated that $30,000 was supposed to be received in March. Helena's waiting on some documents. And Goldtree applied for a $44,000 sewer project. So I guess they've decided to go other directions. So that's kind of what, that's all I know about.
Is this ARP money though?
Yes. I think, I think, I think they're getting confused.
Yeah.
I think they're, I think they're, that's what I'm thinking.
One of them applied for a REIT grant.
Okay.
And then one of them did not receive one.
Okay. See, I think.
Can't remember. I'd have to look on the report.
I received a notification that the City of Cherokee's, it's under Senate review. And that was the week after Christmas, the week between Christmas and New Year's is when ours got moved to under review. And it's still stuck in that pattern. I've called it. I haven't got any other relation. Like I told you guys in the special meeting, my first priority is the Alpa County one. And I'm gonna continue to push that one until it fails. And then I'm gonna proceed with pushing the City of Cherokee one. We could all use those phones, everybody that was in that special meeting. They're just, I don't know if they need help or guidance, but no one's reached out to me. I'm offered to several people. I don't know what else to do other than my assistance is available if you need it. But I can't, I can't force people to.
Well, I'll follow up with Carmen and Aline. I'm gonna check with Goldtree and Jett.
I know Jett was there at the meeting.
Yeah, he is there, yeah.
They exchanged business cards. He was gonna ask me about something.
I just kind of think some of them kind of got, there's so many of them out there. I think they've applied for something and kind of got it confused.
The ARPA fund with the $30,000 that Jett's getting, that's the standard ARPA funds. It's not the additional funding.
Well, the sewer deal, it won't work for the water line infrastructure deal, so.
Yeah, but if they did that on their ARPA funds, they could, they could use that, you know, for their designated and then still apply for the additional grant for water with Alpa County.
Well, we'll try to reach out to them this week and see if we can get everybody on board.
As you guys are talking to your different entities, just encourage them. If they have any questions, I would be happy to help. I'm here to help everybody succeed.
Well, it's something I talked to Shayna about. She said, well, don't we have till December? I said, yeah, but we told you in that meeting that time is an essence, so. They think that that deadline means they got till then, but they're gonna be out of water if they.
That's not pro-crafty, man.
Yes, that's right.
Gentlemen, I appreciate each one of you and what you do. If I could ever do anything for you, please call me. It's very tough.
Ain't that a good girl? Even bad shit. Time to move Jett in there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's on 300.
Aye, let's just do 300.
I mean, I don't care.
Assess my contract with Value Finder.
Okay. Alpa County is divided into four areas for visual inspection by the assessor's office. Our office completes an inspection of every single property. We run a visual inspection area each year. However, we are tasked with and even audited with finding new improvements in every corner of the county. So that's 8,052 parcels at current. So we are responsible for making sure that the guy who builds a barn eight miles down a dirt road, that we find it. Ways that we find new improvements currently is we watch 911 addresses that come in new because the county gets billed for those, so we watch those. And we drive. We drive to random roads looking for new things that weren't there the last time we remember doing it. Our office has been extremely busy with the new software. So time to take off and go drive for an eight-hour day just looking for new stuff is valuable time and it saves a lot of fuel money. I feel like we're really good at finding new stuff, but occasionally I think there's something that gets missed. Things that we're looking for that are harder to find are specifically barns and loaf sheds that don't have. Occasionally, we'll hear some talk around town or something that somebody is building something, and that's how we notate it. There is a company that's not only, it's an international company. They are all certified by the IAAO, which is International Assessing Officers. They will go out and just help assessors find those things that maybe we haven't had radar for. They charge a fee of 2.5% of the assessed value of something. One of the representatives in our area is the former Garfield County Assessor, Wade Patterson. He is the gentleman in our area that kind of goes out and helps assessors find this new stuff. So for example, if, if there was a $300,000 house that, for example, maybe I didn't know about and they didn't get a new 911 address because they were tearing down the old house, if they were to find a $300,000 house, Value Finder would charge us $900 on a $300,000 house. And the tax on that could be around $3,200. So the county would still gain the tax, and then it would be on the tax roll forever. And we don't pay them forever. We just pay them that initial fee to find it. In this contract that is the last three pages that I've given you, it outlines that they will only charge us for things that the assessor's office doesn't already know about. Things that document that we already know about it is if it's on a 911 report or if we have dated pictures. So I could take a dated picture and a foundation, and they'd be like, okay, she already knew about that. Even if we just put a notation in our mark that neighbor said barn being built next year, I could put that notation and they will accept that as evidence that I'm already tracking that particular property. So I don't think that they're gonna pay much, but they only get paid on what I miss. They only get paid 2.5%. So the contract is for up to $5,000 worth of service. $5,000 worth of service is $1.6 million in assets. If they found $1.6 million worth of assets, our charge would be $5,000. And I'm looking at taking the cost of this out of my visual inspection budget. It is visual inspection cost. That way, the cost is shared by the schools, the county, the VOTAC, and the EMS. So any entity that gets those taxes would also have that built into their budget. I'm not planning on increasing my visual inspection budget. I'm just planning on working in because I'm getting rid of a service for my mapping service. Since we've gone over to the new software, I'm not gonna continue to be paying for an additional mapping service. So this will just swap out an expense that's already there, and we won't pay it unless I use it.
What if they don't find anything in a year?
They, I don't pay anything.
You don't pay anything.
I don't see where you can go wrong on a deal like that.
And they won't, they'll give me the list in September, October. I won't even have a bill for it until the next fiscal year anyway. So I'm not even charging anything extra in this fiscal year. This budget that I have is still set. It will just be a swap out in expenses for next year's budget. So that's what I'm looking at doing. And then the DA has looked at the contract and she approved of everything. Yeah, here's the original. This is the original. If you guys approve that, we can move on to the contract. Thank you, Don.
We need to sign them all.
Now, just there, Rachel.
Give your reading. I'm gonna check that.
You wanna have him sign a contract, then I'll copy it. Then I don't have to give the copy. Because I need a copy for that. I was afraid I'd be after this, I know.
I'll stay.
I just was gonna say.
On the paper? Aye.
I'm sorry, I need to make sure I stop him.
Yes, you get our copy, you can.
Does she want it? I'll make a copy after this signature's done.
Did you make a motion, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Are we back to normal now?
Back to normal. Got her breaking out the hives over there. All the crackers.
I thought it was.
Look at the red her neck is.
I don't like people that have attention.
I made the app. I made the app.
I still think it's in her name, the little sister's name.
I mean, who's running that?
Oh, Heather. Haley's still with us.
I assumed that, I damn near did. Her for sure.
Yeah, she's still working on it. They're trying to find someone to replace Kyle, but I don't think they've had any luck. But still, they're last week at least. What was that guy's name? That they hired here, I don't even want to care if he, he's been coming up and helping Heather.
Oh.
I can picturing, but I can't think of his name. Yeah. Right, no. It's not random, it's not random. I can't think of his name. But I know he's been coming up and helping Heather. We're not taking minutes and stuff over there. It's just been Heather in there. Is it right?
Is it?
That's crazy. That's crazy. I gave it a good talking to you. No, really. You're going to the dumpster if you don't strip it out. It's not my thing.
Hello, Jeff Cameron.
Yeah, I'm second.
All in favor?
Lot of purchase orders?
We have one from District 1, District 2, Ambulance, County General, and the Sheriff. General, ambulance, 1, 2, and Sheriff. Sorry.
We're gonna try and share.
No, not the sheriffs.
Second. All in favor? Road crossing permits? Monthly officer report?
We just have that court clerk records management petition, there's just one signature.
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
CD auction policy?
Does anybody take anything down there?
No.
Are you taking anything down there?
No.
So no action, no action. Sorry, that's on the agenda twice.
Second. All in favor? Election for Fair Board members?
They are in the election right now. District One, David Ailes was the one that come in. District Two, Casey Springer from Carmen came in. And District Three, there's an election right now between Kyle Cuddenmore and Troy Campbell. So, sorry, I already had it on the agenda before we knew there was gonna be an election, so.
What was Casey's name?
Springer. So no action on that.
Declaration of Certain Funds for County Clerk, portable two-row roller shelves.
This is an old one that's down in the basement.
One on the buck, wrong?
Well, one of them, it's the one that has the wheels on it. The other ones, I don't want them thrown away or anything because you can't replace them. This is that one that's set up against the wall with the rollers on it. Tony has told me that the rollers are broken. You can't maneuver it. So if you guys want to, he wants to just to throw it away. I told him that he could, I guess the sheriff still has some books down there, but he says he wants to just get it out of there, so.
All in favor? Revise twenty-two by say officer.
I'm sorry, I got it December over there instead of October, so I just should have had to December. I have had a whale of a time with dates this year.
Don't have to get this scrawled, though.
I'm moving shit through me.
We got CD auction policy again.
I didn't want to miss it. I need, wait, I need payroll by nine o'clock on Friday. Preferably you guys Thursday before you leave, but I'm gonna have everybody's by nine o'clock on Friday.
I'll be gone Thursday. I'm actually leaving.
You sign yours then.